One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, March 6, 2018. The time is 7:13. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Walton Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci is absent, excused. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Tucci, he is absent, excused this evening.
Can we have a moment of silence for Senator Commissioner Orecchio and Alan Genetempo's dad? We had a moment of silence before our workshop meeting, but this is our first regular meeting, so please just take a moment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment about Mayor Orecchio?
Sure.
For those of you who never had the opportunity to meet Mayor Orecchio, he is the epitome of an individual who really loved this town. The guy was an acting governor once, he was the Senate President, but I remember the years being here, he always put Nutley first, always did. And if there was a bill in the Senate, if there was something going on statewide, he would make sure that this township would be taken care of. So for those, you know, I was thinking of this the other day, it's kind of sad that we have children growing up in town who never will have the opportunity to meet a real gentleman. I mean, there's not a bad word you could say about this guy, a real gentleman, always treated people with respect and with honor and dignity, but I think I just wanted to put on the record what I just said. He was certainly an inspiration to me and helped me when I became a police officer here, but boy, is he dearly missed, and hopefully down the road, we see another gentleman like him come up and run for office and maybe one day get elected. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would add that he had a passion for veterans, but especially special young adults and anyone that actually was in need. You know, whatever he could do, he was always there, and I agree with you that he was an outstanding and strong advocate for Nutley all the time.
I'm gonna actually read, thank you, Commissioner, I'm gonna actually read something that I posted the day I attended the funeral. I posted this on Facebook about Carmen Orecchio. Today was a very sad day for Nutley. Saying goodbye to such an icon was difficult, especially for me, the person who took over public safety after Carmen Orecchio. Being Carmen's mother's paperboy when I was 10 years old was when I first met him. He helped so many, including me. He was a true statesman and loved the town, and I was proud to know him. One day in my second term as mayor, I ran into Carmen at a wait and shook his, he shook my hand. He held on to it a little longer and said to me, "You're doing a good job, kid." His approval meant everything to me. Today at the cemetery, one of Carmen's lifelong friends shook my hand and said, "You remind me a lot of Carmen." That was a huge compliment to me. Well, in closing, I will let Carmen's spirit guide me in public safety. Nutley was very lucky to have a Carmen Orecchio look out for all of us for so many years, and I was always proud to call him my friend. God bless him. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't, Commissioner, Mayor, and Senator Orecchio probably my whole life, either when my grandfather was running four times for, to be seated up here and not winning, or when my father was here for 25 years, sitting next to him. So he's gonna be missed. He was, he was an icon statewide, not only here, and as everybody said, he always put Nutley first. And I talked to Commissioner Tucci, and although the senator didn't want anything named after him, Commissioner Tucci's gonna look for the appropriate place for something to be named after him, so.
Which parts are yours?
Yes, but that's not ours.
No, obviously.
That's not ours. So Commissioner Tucci's gonna be taking care of that, so. Madam Clerk, Communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have four event applications, three of which are for Holy Family. Holy Family Church has submitted an event application requesting permission to hold their 27th Annual Italian Festival on Thursday, September 20, 2018, through September 23, 2018, at their property located at 28 Brookline Avenue. They have also submitted an event application for Palm Sunday Procession on March 25, 2018, from 11:15 to 11:50, starting at 174 Franklin Avenue and ending at 28 Brookline Avenue. They have also requested permission to utilize Yantico Park near Park Drive for community prayer gathering for five consecutive Sundays, starting April 8 through May 6, 2018, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the last event is... From, Crank Gym from Nutley has submitted an application requesting to hold a memorial fundraiser on May 5 from 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., starting and finishing at Crank Gym on 55 Washington Avenue. I need a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it.
Commissioner Tucci has a chair report that's been submitted. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for March 6, 2018. Public Affairs, $91,379.41. Revenue and Finance, $2,525,105.47. Public Safety, $89,152.86. Public Works, $416,321.94. Parks and Public Property, $951,150.27. Water Utility, $85,794.69. Total Payroll, $917,185.14, for a grand total of $5,076,089.78.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioners?
I do have a comment tonight, Mayor. You know, Tom Evans, being the tax guy, he doesn't really, there's nothing I could really ever compliment him on, and I don't want to say too much about what I did with somebody Tom knows very closely, but the chief and I have broadened our horizons on some of these school issues, and I just wanna, I don't want to say who or what, Commissioner, but I want to thank you for setting that up, and, you know, it was very advantageous, the meeting, who you sent is a true gentleman, and he looks out for Nutley. So not to get into the details, I just want to publicly thank Commissioner Evans for setting that meeting up to chief and I, and always looking out for the town. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Only thing I want to say is, everybody stay safe tomorrow and tomorrow night. Keep your cars off the road, don't travel unless absolutely necessary, and everybody just get home safe tomorrow. Orders, introductions. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes. Before I read this, um, order introduction, this is to change my TO, and again, I've had a chance to talk to everybody on the board. This is bringing a seventh lieutenant in, which I really want to push into intelligence and scrubbing through computers and set up a whole ray of assignments about events and what he does, and again, I'm very pleased from the mayor, I know Commissioner Tucci's not here, but all the board members for getting on board with this and really investing in our children, because this position is gonna work hand in hand with, has become these school threats, you know, over the last few weeks, so. This is an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in Township of Nutley Code, Chapter 131, entitled Establishment and Organization of the Police Department. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with notice required by law and a further consideration of said ordinance for final passage be by the Board of Commissioners to be held at second reading on...
April 3.
April 3, 2018. I move the orders.
Second?
Commissioner Rogers?
Before I vote on this, I want to explain a few things. I want to explain and articulate the importance of what Commissioner Petracca is doing. This is a very proactive policing methodology that I believe will certainly be a tremendous asset in the addressing of some of the incidents we've seen around the country, a very proactive asset. Back in the 80s, we had community policing, 90s, community policing, we had cops in the schools, and the intelligence gathering and information gathering was profound. This police department was able to, in a very good way, curb a lot of drug abuse and proliferation of drugs in this town just by having cops in the schools. This intelligence bureau that he's gonna set up, I understand, will not only be scrubbing social media and hopefully gathering information, but it's no secret, Commissioner, that I've been a very strong proponent of police officers in the schools. Our first line of defense against anyone who dares to come into a school and harm anyone is a person who is well-trained in firearms, and that well-trained person could be a retired police officer, a military person, but we have to emphasize well-trained, and they don't have to be uniformed officers. Back in the 70s and 80s and 90s, we did not have uniformed officers in the schools. They went in plain clothes, and we've talked about this, Commissioner.
We have.
And they have, they've, they created a wonderful relationship with children throughout the school district. We don't want kids running from our schools. We don't want them running out of the schools for safety. We want them running into the schools for safety. And we have police officers who are trained in going down the road that Commissioner Petracca's going, in intelligence gathering and information collection. That doesn't mean that the officers are gonna be grilling kids and dragging information out of them. It means that these well-trained officers, when he sets up this unit, are going to become friends, friends with young people in the school district, and those kids are gonna know that they could go to those officers, and you may know this, maybe some of you don't know this, but there is a program called LEAD. I already know that there are officers in those schools where kids want them to come in. They're befriending them, and let me add this too, about the whole mental health issues and many of the problems that related to the incidents we're seeing, other than the gun issue. That's a federal issue, we shouldn't be involved in that. But when we talk about mental health and we talk about children in need, we're talking about some serious business. We're talking about, and this is where your cops come in, and the intelligence and information gathering aspect of it, we're talking about children that are living in broken homes, we're talking about children who are living in situations where domestic violence has become a way of life, we're talking about children who need a friend, and boy, if that child can see in that officer a friend, then that officer could bring the information that's needed to the school district and to law enforcement authorities to do what must be done to treat that child. I saw it for myself in the 80s, there used to be a kid stop by the juvenile bureau every day to show us his homework, didn't have a father. Had a father, but father didn't care. But because of the community policing aspects and what you're gonna be doing now, you're gonna see a life saved and maybe redirected to something so important to our society. So I fully support this. I like the idea that you're building a framework, especially looking into social media, but your biggest asset are gonna be those young kids, who are gonna come to those officers and say, you know, "I got a bad feeling about so-and-so, could you guys look into it?"
Very true.
So I fully support this, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
You know, to speak to your comments before I vote, which I would vote yes, everything I've learned in a very short period of time says that, you know, one, security for our schools and even for the community is a network and it's an umbrella of overlapping layers of things that you put in place. There's not one thing that you do that makes it right, and not any one thing you do or even the umbrella is 100%, but what I have learned is what you're speaking towards was anything that could be done, whether it's a police officer, a psychologist, a counselor, you know, that you have that can do the early identification before it becomes the threat, which then creates chaos, and even, you know, when you think about it, right, a, one police officer in the school and you have a gun situation, it becomes extreme chaos, right? The level of training that's required, that says if that officer has to pull his weapon, how confident is he that if he does pull it, he's gonna hit his target? And the training that's required and the regular use of that training to make sure that when he pulls his weapon, it can be guided to where it needs to go, because the risk is you then have, in effect, friendly fire that could hurt someone. So I think that's a very delicate issue that has to be addressed, but I think the point you were raising wasn't the chaotic threat, it was the early identification and getting, whatever it is, whatever level is that voice, and Nutley, to Nutley's credit, you know, unlike Parkland, where there were 30 calls to the local sheriff's office of a child who was in an alternate school, alternate school system, four calls to the FBI, and nothing happened. In Nutley, one call, and that's all it took to basically exercise the forces that we have in play and get people to act, and I think that's to the credit of the town and to public safety and the dedication of the officers, where a child speaks to a parent, a parent calls, and no, there's no question about it, there's action. And I think that's part of, again, I think it's another layer of the security umbrella that says our police station is in close proximity to the schools, we can respond very quickly, but when we get notice of something, we don't ignore it, we act. And I think that's, that's important part of, you know, figuring this all out before, but I like your point about how do you put things in place, which isn't about the pinnacle of where there's a threat and it's active, where there's chaos, it's about how you do the early identification to avoid that level, and I think that's, that's very appropriate. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Petracca?
I vote yes.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Yes.
Mayor, before we just move on, I just, first of all, I'd like to thank the board, and it's the word that I've been preaching about this ordinance, and it really means a lot, the full support of the board on something like this, is the prevention, you know, and I have to tell you, Captain Green, I saw him walk in, he's our captain that oversees the detective bureau, and I don't want to get into how many threats we've had and how many things they've been looking into, but it definitely stresses out your agencies, you know, and not that one person is needed, because when there's nothing going on, as I always said, you know, it's, you know, you could do without a lot, but it's never a problem till it's a problem, and you know, we've had some problems in Nutley, and to me, it's all about prevention. But at the last commission meeting, I did mention what a great job the parents did, the kids did, our superintendent did, the school board did, of seeing something and saying something, and that's the biggest message that we could ever put out there, because we cannot defend from it. A lot of communities are, they're great at responding, and Nutley has a great response time. We have the ESU team, which a lot of towns come to train with our guys, that's how far ahead of the curve we are, but it's about prevention, and that's what I'm trying to accomplish with all of your help. So I appreciate the vote, and I know that I had a couple kind words to say for Captain Green in the back, but now that he's here, I'll do that in person. I have to tell you, this guy, along with the chief and all the detectives, they work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that's during the school threat, and I know I've mentioned that before, but I'd just like to stand up and give Jerry a round of applause, and not just for you, Captain, but for all your men, that you guys did a great job and will never know what you prevented here or now, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
No raises, by the way, right?
Excuse me?
No raises, right?
No, no, no. Actually, Captain's here on his own type, Tom.
Resolution number... Resolution number 6718. Whereas in 1988, the month of March was designated by the United States Congress as National Women's History Month, and whereas Women's History Month promotes the teaching of women's history and the achievements of women throughout the world, and whereas it is important for the residents of the township to recognize the growing contributions and achievements of women in the township of Nutley, state of New Jersey, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley calls upon all citizens of Nutley to observe the month of March as National Women's History Month 2018. Nevertheless, she persisted, is a quote, honoring women who fight all forms of discrimination against women, at which time all of the residents may join in commemorating women past and present who have rendered a service to our nation, our state, and our township. Also therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley calls upon all citizens of Nutley to observe International Women's Day, Thursday, March 8, a global day of celebrating the economic, political, and social achievements of women past, present, and the future since 1911. Before I move this resolution, we've had outstanding women in this town. I remember we found two World War II veterans, women, imagine in World War II, they achieved the rank of admiral. One of them, we have her, a plaque dedicated to her in our office, she was a nurse in the United States Navy during World War II. We had one who was a grand marshal of a parade here. God knows how many other women we have in this town that have made so many contributions to this country. But I've always emphasized this, and I always sound like a broken record sometimes, but for some reason, lost in our history books is the contributions of women to this country during World War II. I hadn't learned about that until it was later in life. Where were our mothers, our grandmothers, our fathers, our grandfathers, or our grandmothers or mothers, I should say, when Dad was out fighting the war of Europe? They were in the factories. My mother was in the Brooklyn Navy Yard, in factories, welding Jeeps and tanks. So as we pass this resolution, I would hope that some educators around the town and the country realize that maybe we gotta put some more emphasis on the contributions of women, especially for young girls today, because this is history that should not be forgotten, and unfortunately, it has been forgotten. People ask me, what's the sense of these resolutions? Why do we have a resolution like this? To do exactly what we're doing tonight, public awareness of lost history, public awareness of a history we should never, 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 never forget. So I move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. I have three, three resolutions that are all related to the same, same item. In May, we will be financing a new set of bonds for $6,791,000 of principal amount. We'll also be refinancing our bond anticipation note, which will be at $2,693,300. The bond anticipation note will be for a period of one year. It relates to the Chiccolini purchase, which was an original purchase at $3,425,000, but our bonding related to that is down to $2,693,300, because we've been paying that down. We don't have any bonding related to the purchase of the building next to the bike shop, because that building, that purchase has been paid off. So we continue to pay down our, our debt. The, the reason for this is that as we look at the bonds, we periodically renew our bonds, generally around a five-year, five-year mark, we'll go through that, and the market is good timing. We believe that we'll be able to get a bond that will have an 11-year life and an interest rate that will be below 3%. And given the timing of some of the actions in the market and the focus of the Federal Reserve where they might start to increase interest rates, we want to take advantage of the bonding before that occurs, which is most likely to occur later in the year. So the timing is very good. So I just will, you know, look at, Resolution number 5818 relates to the bond anticipation note in the amount of $2,693,300. It will be for a period not to exceed one year. 5918 relates specifically to our bond, bonding, which will be a note, as I said, which we believe will be 11 years, for $6,791,000. Overall, our debt service going forward will be less annually, because of the way we're managing our, through this, will be lower by $200,000 per year, and actually, in the fifth year, it actually increases, the benefit increases, so we'll continue to do that. What you find is, is that every year, we have in our capital management program, the commissioners, we negotiate on what we need to spend money on, such as how do we anticipate a large purchase, such as purchase of a fire truck or building improvements? We spread that out, and so each year, we manage to roughly one and a half million dollars worth of capital improvements. We will be, we're able to fund that, and then every, roughly every five years, we renew, we renew the bonding. Overall, from Nutley's position, we have a borrowing ceiling that is over $126 million. Our outstanding debt is roughly 12% of that, so we keep our debt very low, and we manage that roughly to, to a nice sort of mortgage level, less than 3% with maturity of 11 years. We try to stay around that so that we can manage our way through that, so very effectively. We're getting good rates, short periods, short intervals, we're not, we're not bonding for 20, 30 years, we keep it, we keep it short, and we manage our way through that, and we control that all because of each year, we put a cap through our capital management plan. So number 5918 is for the authorization to purchase bonds in the amount of $6,791,000. The 6018 specifically relates to the bonds themselves for the, for the same amount of $6,791,000. So I, I move resolutions together, numbers 5818, 5918, and 6018, so move.
Second. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, the treasurer being, she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of $7,888.05 for block 5900, lot 13, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, state of New Jersey, the treasurer being, she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $14,115.18 as follows. Block 3600, lot 25, for $3,126.57. Block 8700, lot 53, for $2,216.65. Block 5301, lot 1, for $3,843.75. Block 9000, lot 1, qualifying code C4085, for $3,044.09. And block 9000, lot 75, for $1,884.12, as I said, for a total of $14,112,000.
And Block 9000, Lot 75, for $1,884.12, as I said, for a total of $14,115.18, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, state of New Jersey, this treasurer being, she is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of $4,390 for 6466 Franklin Avenue Trust Account, T15910968, for $1,000. And 180-184 Center Street Trust Account, T15910859, for $3,390, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patraco?
Yes, I'll just read this by title. This is some, this is Resolution Number 68-18, whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A attached heretofore incorporated hereon has been abandoned by its owners and titled as junk along I standard title cleared through the division of motor vehicle. So this is for a few cars, 2002 Ford, 2004 Honda, a 2008 Mazda, and a 2008 Toyota, and a 2003 Chevy. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that in accordance with provisions RS48, on 40-59, the following transfers of 2017 appropriation reserves being, the same are hereby authorized and approved from police salary wage, $10,000, to police salary, $10,000. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a specialized professional service as an on-due fair open contract pursuant of the provision NJSA 1944A 20.5 with Terinsky and Hollenbach, 1100 Valley, Brook Avenue, Lynnhurst, New Jersey, for legal services on March 7, 2017 via Resolution Number 64-17, whereas the Director of the Department of Public Safety has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change Order Number One, Legal Services, $2,110.16, whereas funds are available from Account Number 7-01, 308-205 have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that Change Order Number One in the amount of $2,110.96 since being hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns, should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hello, Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue. I have a few questions, topics. First of all, the State Department of Community Affairs just announced a significant change in what they're requiring in terms of building permits and inspections, roofing, siding, indoor plumbing, fixture replacement, indoor sheet rock and drywall, and a few other things, alarm systems, they're no longer requiring permits. So I know this news is very recent, so I'm just wondering, will there be a projection prepared in terms of potential revenue loss, potential reduction of inspections?
We haven't done that yet, because it just came out, but we do have to look at what the implication is, because we're actually anticipating more revenue for the code office this year, and because of that change, we may have to reduce our revenue expectation as a result. So the answer is, we do have to look at it, but it just came out, and I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, I understand, it just happened. So I guess on the flip side, it would be great to have some consumer education about hiring a registered contractor, how to make sure you're getting the best value for your buck, and this may sound odd, but if there's going to be a reduction in inspections, but we have qualified people, can the town offer a service that someone can say, I'm hiring an inspector to come out and inspect my job before I pay the final payment to a contractor? I mean, especially in the case of roofing, if a contractor is reputable and they put a third layer on, you know, it's a problem. So, I don't know, just thinking of budgetary and revenue opportunities for the town. So I attended the joint meeting last week of the Board of Commissioners, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Board of Education, thought it was very educational. I was sort of a surprised about mixed use and density, how many times it's been mentioned over the years, but there just have been gaps. So I believe there's a workshop scheduled for tomorrow night, obviously pending snow and...
It was canceled due to weather.
It was canceled. So the next, so the workshop will take place at the next Planning Board meeting?
That would be Carol Tangora, but I assume that would be correct.
Okay. So my question is, what will be in place in terms of ensuring that there will be a resolution, the workshop, the third workshop on mixed use and density will actually result in recommendations between all parties, including the Building Department, and that the recommendations for policies will come to the Board of Commissioners? How will that be ensured?
Well, so in the code office, I've already given instructions that the differences that have been identified must be resolved, and I don't know if the meeting is still being held, but the meeting between the code office and the Committee of the Planning Board was supposed to take place tomorrow morning at 8:00, because I didn't want it to, and I made it clear that it can't linger. So we will stay on top of that to make sure that whatever those differences are, whatever it takes to resolve those differences and do it right, that will be done between the code office and the planning board. When that's completed, that will be a resolution, recommendation that will become before the Board of Commissioners. And with that, when all the differences reconciled, it should be easier, easy to get it through the Board.
Great, thank you so much. I don't know if this is something that gets addressed to the chairperson of the Planning Board, but developer fees, I brought that up at the meeting last week, there didn't seem to be a response, but between developer fees and COA trust deposits, I'm not sure that that has happened for years. Again, who is that addressed to, who's responsible for that?
Sure.
So...
So COA fees have been regular. The COA trust account has currently, I believe, it's over $400,000 in it because of the fees that were made. There was a period of time where you could make a payment, which was the COA fee, in lieu of having COA-related housing. Round three, which is where we're currently in, doesn't allow for that. And because Nutley is an urban aid, distressed city, is at that designation, we're applying for exemption from the COA requirement for round three, as you're probably aware. So the fees have been collected on all those properties. You can't get a CO unless the COA fee has been calculated and paid. So there's that assurance. And I don't believe, I think I addressed one side of your question, what was the other?
Developer fees.
Developer fees. There are very clear rules around what you can ask for in terms of a developer, which is an impact fee. And there's an ordinance on our books that relates to what that is. Generally, it's things that would impact the infrastructure, such as the sewer lines, the water lines, and things like that, and there is a determination made through engineering as to related to what that is. When it comes to Hough and LaRoche, however, and you're looking at a redevelopment, the aspect of what would be a developer fee is broader, because there could be impacts on our infrastructure, such as our police department, other services that we would be able to negotiate.
Great. Okay, and I think I still have a little time, because there were a lot of great answers. PSENG repaving, is there a schedule planned by street with the level of repaving? I know some of that has been discussed in terms of when was the street last repaved, but could something be, I know, could something be published? Sorry, I couldn't see overall, let me check.
There's nothing been scheduled at this time, Amy.
Okay, so...
In fact, they were scheduled to go out and walk the roadways tomorrow, public service and engineering, so that's not going to happen tomorrow.
Right, absolutely not. Do we have a way to ensure that PSENG is committing to a timeline?
Once we decide which roadways and how they're going to be paved, we've got a good piece of news today that the, they're going to be using a state contractor, which will make it easier for us to coordinate with our paving plan, so it's coordinated in that area.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Terry Cork, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for the Nutley Paranormality Network. I'm really glad I came to this meeting, I really am, because I'm glad to hear how the commissioners are discussing the gun safety and school safety. This has been a really difficult time for everybody. I mean, the kids, we all went to these meetings, we all heard from them, we heard from parents. Nobody is happy about this. We're all in mourning, almost, because school has now become a different place, even here. I'm not pointing, but we have a police officer here, and that's okay, because you know what? This is the world that we live in now. This is it. So I do, I do want to thank you for having that conversation. I'm tending to agree more with Mr. Roger, Commissioner Rogers, than with Commissioner Evans, no offense, but we have a great police department, but if they're not on scene, our worry is that we're up against, we're up against something like an assault rifle, somebody walks in or has some sort of, some sort of rifle like that, we're really talking about multiple deaths, and it's so alarming to actually have to actually say that. But it is something, but I'm really glad that you had that conversation and that you're moving forward and you're proceeding. I do have to thank, I understand, on that Monday, on the 26th, when the students went back, there were police officers, and they were around the school. Now, this was information, and we're all going to say this is hearsay, but I'm going to say it anyway, I understand that there were patrols that wanted to enter the high school, just to make the kids feel good, just to walk around, show their support, because later on, we found out later that night how uncomfortable they were. But we heard through the grapevine that, and this could be completely wrong, but we heard that the police were denied access to the building, which I find really difficult. Okay, well, I was just, but it can't happen. At times like this, our police...
Terry, let me just...
Can I just finish one second?
And then I just want to, but I just want to...
I just want to finish, one second, because I, my feeling is that, you know, the police at this time recognize how the kids were, and we appreciate that. I mean, this is, this is an opportunity. The police never have an opportunity to really connect with the community, and this was, this was the best opportunity. So I'm hoping that in the future, as we proceed, we work together in that, and this is not something that I have against this Board of Commissioners, it's really something that we need to move forward with the other Board, but we just really want to proceed and communicate. What did you want to say?
Yeah, I wanted to say, first of all, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing out there and sending the message out, and I see you also at the meetings, and I don't even believe you have any kids in school anymore, because I believe they went through mine. So that's admirable. I won't speak for Commissioner Evans, but I think we are all on the same page on this Board, so I don't know what the disconnect, what that was, but however, I want you to know that I am an advocate for the school guards to be in the school. Joe Valano, who's our Class Three Special Officer here tonight, he's a retired guy, and that's what I think should be in schools, and it should be through the police department, because they're trained officers, and it's not an outside company running it, it'll be through our police department. It's not a cure-all, by no means, it's just an extra layer that, you know, you have somebody... But I just want to, the one thing that I didn't mean to interrupt you, you know the respect I have for you, is that I have to say that we have been in the schools all along. We had, you know, there when Lieutenant Rogers was there, we have Lead now there, and I have to tell you, our cops are in the schools a lot, and I don't want to throw up a bone for Commissioner Rogers' son, Steve Rogers, who was at Washington School, but we were going to move the cops around and play a little shuffle game. We got so many calls about not to move any of them from any of these schools, especially his son, because the kids are attached to them, and they know them by name. Mike Padilla, another detective, unbelievable, Terry, how the kids run up to him. And what's so important to me about that is that if little Johnny or, you know, little Suzie is having a bad day or is not up to stuff, and is thinking about doing something bad, a lot of these kids are running up to Steve Rogers' kids, kid, son, Mike Padilla. And we're about prevention in Nutley. We have a great reactive community of policing here, we have the best equipment, we have the best of the best of the best, but we want to prevent, and it's my opinion, and I have to commend Steve as well, because he's been to all those meetings, and the Mayor as well. You know, look, Terry, our kids are our prized possessions. I have a fourth grader in Spring Garden, and I asked him, and my fourth grader's not, he's not very athletic, he's not like my other two were, kind of, you know, he is who he is. And I said to him one night, I said, "Salvatore, Daddy wants to ask you a question. What do you think about, you know, having a police officer in the school, you know, not in uniform?" But he says, "You know, Dad?", he goes, "It would make me feel safer." He says, "Not even though I might not see him, he might be in the hallway somewhere", and I, he goes, "But I think just knowing that he's there, it would make myself and my friends feel safer." You know, and I said it at one of the meetings, you know, it's not always what we want up here, it's what the majority of the people want. We're an extension of the people, and I think that if it makes our kids feel safer, if the majority of the parents want it, and I have to tell you, I have gotten threatening emails saying, "If you dare put an armed guard in that school, you know, you'll have a problem, I'll campaign against you", and all that stuff, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Because what the conversations I've been having, Terry, is that 10 years, when I was Patraco, was laying on some beach somewhere, I want to know, as the Public Safety Director, as your Public Safety Director, that if, God forbid, something happens here, I did everything in my power to prevent it. And I think that's very, very important to say. So I believe, you know, it is up to the superintendent and the Board, and they're going through those exercises and seeing what best fits for them, but our police department has always had directive patrols to all the schools before we had this threat, and they get out of the cars, they walk around the school perimeter, check the doors, make sure everything is okay. Now, the only thing that we did different was the Monday day when they went back to school, is we actually walked into the schools, okay? And we went down the hallways, greeted the principal, and we did that a few times every day to all the schools. Now, that's something that I want, I really want to continue. However, you were at the Board of Ed meeting that Monday night, where somebody said, "Well, you have approximately 70 cops, which we don't, we have 67, okay, and somebody's always out injured, and somebody's always out on vacation, and all that stuff." So we have a minimum of five patrolmen every day. So we don't have, because somebody said, "Well, if we take 10% of our fleet, you know, and put them by the schools, you know, we should be okay." But unfortunately, 67 guys, times 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, you know, vacations, holidays, we don't have that many cops there, you know? So we don't want to give up what we have and tell all our details, but, you know, we just received a grant to that, we were, I think, was it one of three, Tom? And the whole, one of four, one of four municipalities got a grant to hire cops, you know? In the beginning, we were kind of, or I was kind of going into, let's maintain what we have, but now, and with the Board again, because I can't do this by myself, Terry.
Right, no.
You know, we have to have these guys, they all have a vote, and I have to tell you. So now we are going to be adding numbers through that grant to the police department, and I can't do it alone, but I have to tell you, every one of, you know, these commissioners up here have stepped up to the plate and said, you know, "Don't spend the money foolishly, but if it's, when it comes to the kids' safety..." but if it's, when it comes to the kid's safety, whatever we have to do is on board," and I think that's admirable. So, I just wanted to let you know, and again, Terry, you and I, we know each other a long time, and I respect and I admire what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a really quick question for the mayor. We heard from Commissioner Evans and from Commissioner Rogers. What's your position in regards to, how do you feel about armed guards?
Terry, Terry, the world, the world is changing, and we need to change with it. That's how I feel.
Right. Thank you.
Terry, to my point, just so to be clear, I wasn't disagreeing with Commissioner Rogers. My, my point was that the, the idea of, it's not, it's not just a police officer. It's, it's the social, social services, counselors, psychologists, because you wanna avoid the crisis situation where there's all that chaos, right? And I also, as, as a father, I don't have any children in the school, but as a, as a parent, who would say I'd have children in the school, I wanna know that that police officer, that if he's in or she's in that chaos situation, that they're well-trained to handle that. So, when you see that you're in a school and all of a sudden, somebody comes in, you have children running, teachers running, somebody trying to do this, and you're one officer in that school, are you prepared to act, and have you been properly trained? Because if you pull your gun, that nine millimeter is not gonna go 15 feet. It's gonna go a long distance, and there's a risk that if you miss, missed, that you can inadvertently hit somebody else that you don't wanna hit. So, the training that's required, the practice that's required, I think all of that has to be part of the solution. It's not just pick up somebody and say, "Today, you're gonna be in the school." The person who's gonna do that as a job, they need to be on the practice range. They need to be in training for chaos situations.
I agree.
But, more importantly, the safer thing to do is do whatever you can to prevent that. And so, one of the things is, see, you have West Virginia University, they have an armed security force. It didn't stop it. You had at Parkland, you had a sheriff's officer there. Didn't stop it, right? But, there's a, but if you do it as part of an integrated network of things, which is mostly on identifying early who's at risk. This poor, poor child in Parkland, high risk, 30 calls to the sheriff's office, four to the FBI, placed an alternative school because of those issues. It was, it was just a bomb waiting to explode, and they didn't catch it. Here in Nutley, we had one posting, parents activated, called the police, boom, we're on it. And that child is now getting the care that they, that they need, right? So, the more we can look at an umbrella of things to make sure that that layer and those layers of interconnecting layers are there, that, that actually creates a safer, not 100%, but a safer environment. So, what we're talking about was, the lead program wasn't about having a police officer there to prevent somebody from a shooting. It was about relationships with the children, right, in the schools, so that they're more willing and more comfortable to approach a police officer and tell them something, so you gather that intelligence. And that was so valuable, and the continuation of that is so critical. And, and, you know, Commissioner Patraco alluded to, but I was at the meeting at the school board where they're talking about hiring an outside security agency. Well, we were able to arrange for the Director of Homeland Security to meet with the school, meet with the mayor and the Public Safety Director yesterday, to do a security evaluation of all of our schools.
Thank you.
And that's gonna happen very quickly.
Thank you.
So, that's the cooperation between both boards.
Mr. Mayor?
Thanks.
I'm in a bit of a talkative mood tonight.
Guess you don't wanna get home before we're past the-
No, I do, but, but when they say, somebody said to me last week, "When you get the moment, seize it," because it may be a long time before you get that moment again. So, Mrs. Terry Cork, you have given me a moment to seize. First of all, I truly want, I wanna follow up on what Commissioner Patraco said, because it isn't said enough. I'm sitting here tonight, and I'm reading this resolution about Women's History Month and women who have contributed to their communities, to the state, and to the country. And I'm watching you, and I'm saying, "You're one of them. You're one of those women who," you know what? We may not disagree a lot on things, but the one thing that I can say, that you have been doggedly passionate, articulate, knowledgeable. And the one thing that impresses me about you, and I really mean this, you have never come here mean-spirited. You have never come here with an "I gotcha" type attitude. You've always come here articulate, knowledgeable, knowing what you're talking about, and respecting, respecting something that, we mentioned Carmen Arreio earlier, what was so, so important to him, respecting the integrity of the institutions that you address. So, I seized this moment tonight only because you're sitting here. This certainly was not on my mind tonight. But, I wanna thank you, and Commissioner Patraco, thanks for giving me the segue. But, I really mean it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners this evening?
Henry Williams, 135 Lakeside Drive. The organizational meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Committee was on June 26, 2013. And I know over the last two years, we haven't had any meetings. I'd like to see, have an update on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And the first thing I'd like to note is, of the organizational members, there were, well, we know Mr. Carmen Arreio, who was the Chairman of the Committee, is no longer with us, but there was John Barry, John Dizzo, James Bruder, Joseph Payne, Lorraine Kozinski, Vincent LaCurtio, Joseph Russo, Sam Pacaglia, Bill Brontata, Angelo Tuffelli, Arthur Tuffelli, Russell Lazadick, who we know is not, no longer here in the district, and Thomas O'Brien, of the original committee. Commissioner Evans, could you tell us who is, is still on the committee? And what is the status of the Economic Development Advisory Committee?
Yeah, so there's no one on the committee because I suspended it.
This committee has been suspended?
Absolutely, for a while now. The reason for it is the actions that need to be addressed are actually integrated with the work that needs to be resolved with the On3 site. So, until we get clarity around the direction of that, and, and a big theme for the On3 site is how it integrates into the community, how it supports our business district, and then what would be, if they would be able to contribute to, to helping us address some of those things. Because we have that sort of big unknown there right now, the committee came to a point where one was becoming clearer to consider establishing a special improvement district, getting the Chamber of Commerce to be part of that, and it was too early for us. So, basically, we were on the early side. We got a lot of information that's helpful in our discussions with Hoffleroche and the impact on Hoffleroche. And so, until we actually progressed through that a little bit farther, I've suspended that activity until we can clear our way to say, "Okay, now we can get together and start to, to make substantive action." We just basically hit, hit a wall where we, we couldn't go.
Okay, thank you.
Until, until it, and, and, so I expect to-
The committee is, is on a pause, you would say?
Yeah, yeah, a pause might be better, but, but I, and when I bring it back, I'll reconsider who should be on that, because I think we'll have a different outlook at that time, and things, and things will be clearer.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned that tomorrow at 8:00 AM, there would be a workshop on mixed use and density. Who will be at-
No, a meeting. It's not, it's not a workshop. It's a meeting.
A meeting? Who will be attending that meeting?
It's a, an internal meeting between the Code Office and the Committee of the Planning Board that worked on the mixed use definition, so that they, that they can get together to have a conversation to, in effect, address their differences.
And who are the members of that subcommittee of the Planning Board?
Uh, I believe it's Jerry Del Tufo, Mark Arcuti, and Anthony Malfatano, right?
And Lorraine Kozinski.
And Lorraine Kozinski.
Who?
Lorraine Kozinski.
Uh, Lorraine's in Florida.
Yeah, and so, I, she may not be there, but I'm saying that's, whoever's available is gonna meet tomorrow. I think three out of the four were. I'm not sure they're gonna meet tomorrow because of the declared state of emergency.
Okay, because you just said there was a meeting at 8 o'clock.
It's scheduled for 8. I don't know. I, I don't have the answer. So, so they're, because of the state of emergency, we're not open tomorrow, so they may not meet.
Because it was an agenda item for the Planning Board meeting tomorrow night.
Correct.
If the Planning Board meeting stays placed, will that-
Planning Board, Planning Board meeting's canceled.
Planning Board meeting's canceled. So, will this agenda item that was listed, it was listed as a workshop on mixed density, I mean, mixed use, that was known as as a public meeting? So, my question is, will the agenda item, mixed use workshop for the public meeting, be on the next Planning Board meeting?
That's, that's an issue, a matter for the Planning Board. I suspect it will be, but that would be something that Carol Tengora would decide as the Planning Board Chair.
Okay, so she will decide if it will be an agenda item on the next meeting?
Barring anything unforeseen, I, I can't see why it won't, won't be on.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Anybody else like to address the board of commissioners?
John Kelly, 162 Page Street. I know, I know the debate is very much open on this, and I offer no opinion on it, but if we are gonna go in the direction of putting armed guards or Class III officers in the school, I just would like to offer a friendly suggestion that we remember our vets, our, our veterans coming back from overseas. They've been in actual gunfights. They, they know what to do in these types of situations, and they're facing unemployment at rates higher than the typical average civilian. And so, instead of bringing back any retired officers, nothing against the retired officers, maybe remember our veterans who have served our country, so that-
I think that, I think that when, if, if and when we do this, and again, John, this is not a, a board of commissioners' decision, and certainly not mine. It's up to the school board. I am an advocate of Class III specials, which Mr. Valano is standing over there. You know, he has a lot of history with the Nutley Police Department. He has a lot of history with the buildings, knowing the building. You know, our police officers all do ESU training to respond to an active shooter. You came in a little late tonight. You know, what I was saying before, we are the, the premier township and police department. Other communities come to train with our officers to try to mirror what we do. So, I don't, I'm not, I'm not big on just hiring an agency to take that over. I think, and again, it's not my call, but if I could have it my way, it would be ran through the police department, because it would be ran as a paramilitary organization. Now, there's no reason, I don't believe, and I will check this tomorrow, why a veteran, and I think you have two veteran lovers here, well, four veteran lovers here, I should say, I don't think there's no reason why they couldn't get that classification.
But there are, there, if I may, if I may weigh in a minute, a couple of things we have to keep in mind is that a lot of veterans coming from the Middle East are suffering from post-traumatic stress. There's a lot of them, a real good number of them. So, that would be a, another level of screening that has to be done. But, secondly, the, and I'm for veterans getting these jobs. However, I've been around long enough and spent a career in the military, understanding that combat operations in a foreign country are quite, quite different than a community policing operation. In other words, I'm not saying they can't do it, but the transition is very dramatic. I have had discussions, in fact, remember the early part of, I guess, the month, Commissioner, I went to Commissioner Patraco when the veteran situation came up, and I agreed that, yeah, we want to employ veterans. It would be great to have them in there, but to transition in speaking to military personnel is very dramatic. Doesn't say they can't do it, but it would be quite a task, especially, I, I happen to talk to two Marines, and I've got a Marine and an Iraq war vet, Courtney Johnson, and Dan Jacoby, who was in Iraq. And they had explained to me also that, that door-to-door combat operations in Iraq, the transition would be rather dramatic. It can't be, it's, I'm not saying it can't be done, but the Class III community policing training, starting off with that, may be the way to go. But, the door shouldn't be closed. I agree with you. And perhaps down the road, we're gonna find that we're gonna be able to do that.
And I don't, and I don't believe that they would be shut out from being a Class III. I mean, they would have the right to go through an academy.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, they would go for a psych test as part of our hiring procedure here in Nutley. So, I think that it is possible.
But I think to Commissioner Evans' point, and you articulated this a few times, and it was very important, well-trained, very well-trained personnel, not only in the use of firearms, but in tactical training is very important, because it's not only, like you said, taking a gun out and shooting someone, it's, it's engaging the aggressor. And sometimes you can engage, engage the aggressor without ever firing a shot. So, and that's something that maybe some of our vets are trained in more than what we would see in the academies these days. But, you know, to me, your point's well-taken, and they haven't been forgotten, believe me.
Right, I'm not, I don't mean to suggest that we just take, pick vets up off the street and drop them into the school system. I'm, I'm just saying that we have young veterans coming home who may not have this job opportunity lined up, and we gotta, we gotta remember them. And if they need the necessary training, give them the training. If they need to go through a psych eval and shore, we need those-
Well, you know, good point. Commissioner Patraco, I, I don't know. It's been years since I've been involved with the Class III specials. Would, as on civil service or regular police officers, would veterans get preference? Do we know that?
I don't, I don't, I don't think they do get some preference.
No, I wonder if we-
No, I don't, I know that they get it through civil service, through, through the main hiring process to become a police officer. As far as a Class III, which I believe would happen, is that they would come back, and they would have to go through the academy to get the certification.
Can we, and this would be you, all right? But, can we think about an ordinance, if we could do it council-legally, to give veterans who go through the training, the process of preference on these Class III lists? Or, is it still the discretion of the police commissioner to appoint who, you know, who, who he wants, who he believes is well-trained?
I can't answer that question now. I'd have to take a look at that.
Well, what do you think, Commissioner, what?
Listen, I, look, I always give veterans a nod, you know, that's-
But, I'm not saying no one, anyone here is-
Right, no, and we're not, we're not taking-
It's a good idea.
We're not taking the defensive stance, but I will tell you this, John. I want the, and one thing Commissioner Rogers didn't touch on is the social skills. You know, I know quite a few guys that are in the Bellevue school systems, and it's the intelligence that we're after. You know, well, putting armed guards in a, a school with, with a nine millimeter, and the guy comes in there with AK-47, it's not really an even match. This is to try to prevent something from happening. And a lot of the police officers or the armed guards that they have in Bellevue, it's the intelligence that they gather in the schools that I'm really after. Prevent it, prevent, prevent, prevent. So, with that being said, I want the best and the brightest in those schools, whoever that person is. If it's a vet, absolutely. If it's a retired police officer. But, I think that the most important thing to, to come at it tonight is, we're all vet-friendly, and, and I appreciate you coming up to the mic, but whoever, when we go through the process of hiring somebody, we go through the process to recognize that this guy's gonna have a gun in our town, you know, and be driving around in our streets and talking to our children and protecting our parents and ourselves. So, when it comes to hiring police, you know, I, we have a, just so you know, we have a committee in the police department that does all the screenings, and then they take that, those candidates, John, and who they think are the best and brightest, no matter if they're veterans, if they're civilians, if they're, whatever they are, that's who we're after to hire. And to put, you know, them in the school, I would follow that, that same practice. If it happens to be a vet, I would be glad to give them a job.
Right, I'm not suggesting a way to implement this or any sort of procedures or anything. I'm just merely just putting it out there to the board that, let's not forget our vets who are coming from overseas.
We, we never do. We, we, we never do.
Right, and I'm not saying anyone here is-
And again, and again, and again, this isn't our decision. You know, this isn't our decision to make. So, you know what? As much as I wanna be part of it, you know, somebody could say, you know, "You're not on the school board. You're not the superintendent. When we need you, we'll call you." And it hasn't been like that. They've been very cooperative with me, the chief. We've been sitting in our meetings, like I commend Commissioner Evans for setting that up with Homeland Security yesterday. You know, look, we, which our most prized possession is our children, you know? And we will go through great lengths. You came in a little late tonight. We passed an ordinance tonight for the police department's TO. They had another lieutenant's position. It was voted on unanimously, because we realize we're not gonna spare the expense to protect our children on this board. And hopefully, you know, I've spoke to Dr. Blazer, hand in hand, many phone calls in person, and she says to me, "Al, I don't have an opinion. I'm not a professional of if there should be school guards in the school or if there shouldn't be." She wants to do her due diligence, and I respect that, and gather all the information. She doesn't wanna shoot from the hip and just say, "Okay, let's do this." She wants to do her due diligence and then come up with her conclusion. And I think she has the right to do that, you know? So, you know, she's doing a lot of listening, you know, to experts. Her chief's been talking to her. You know, I mean, look, you know, armed guards are in, are in Fairfield, you know? They're in Livingston, you know? So, you know-
So, you know, again, it's not a cure-all, but it's just another layer that, hopefully, that gentleman or that woman that's sitting in those schools is friendly with these kids, and they get the intelligence, and if there's a kid that's having a problem, that's gonna do something bad, again, prevention is the name of the game.
Right, I didn't mean to suggest that anyone on this board isn't vet-friendly, and I was just saying, just let us not forget our vets, and I do expect that, or I'm understanding that you guys are gonna be part of the conversation, and it was brought up tonight, and I just wanted to put that suggestion out there.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpella.
Aye. Stay safe, everybody.
And the time is 8:24. We are closed tomorrow, there's a state of emergency, we're closed tomorrow, you guys are, you guys are-